Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's City Council Meeting of June 15, 2016. And could I please, at this time, have Pastor Noah Lawson from St. Albans come forward for the opening prayer?
Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the community, let's begin this evening with a moment of silence for the victims of the Orlando terror attack. James 1:5 says, "If any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask God, who gives generously to all without reproach, and it will be given to them." Heavenly Father, we praise you and we thank you for the gift of this day, for the opportunity to be present and to gather as a community here in Los Banos. And our deep prayer is that our mayor and our council, our department heads in this city, would indeed be endued with your divine wisdom, that decisions would be made that would honor you and would benefit your people. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
I'd like to call to order the City Council Meeting of June 15, 2016. Chief, would you lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, roll call. Director Maloney?
Freeya?
Here.
Lewis?
Present.
Silveira?
Present.
Stonegrove?
Here.
Mal Walton? Here. We do have a quorum. Consideration of approval of agenda. Item four, I have a motion. Mr. Freeya?
I'll move to approve the agenda as submitted.
Mrs. Lewis?
Second.
Motion by Silve-- oh, motion by Freeya, second by Lewis, to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Presentations. Item A, photo memorial, Los Banos war heroes killed in action. Could I have all the VFW and American Legion come forward, please? Tonight, we are here to bring to a close not the story of these fifteen men, their lives, and how they grew up in Los Banos, enlisted in the service, and died for our country. But this brings closure to a project started four years ago. And I'm just going to-- I went through the whole history last night, and it was rather lengthy, but-- and I'm just going to just give you just a touch of what we talked about last night. Four years ago, I needed a speech for the Memorial Day presentation out at the National Cemetery and out at our local cemetery. And not being the service person myself, not-- it was not in military service, I wanted to make sure that it was correct, that everything that I said. So a friend of mine, Mr. Rick Toscano, came up with the idea to read the names of the fifteen men who died in action or in service to our country through World War I, right after World War I, World War II, and Vietnam. The first year, we read the names of the fifteen men. Next year, with the help of Randy Williamson, Rick Toscano, and my wife and I, we did research to find out a little bit of the background of these men and kind of probe into their lives to see who they were and how they died. And we read, or I read that speech at the Memorial Day service the following year. The third year, we were able, through the donations of the VFW and the American Legion, in their fundraising efforts, were able to dedicate a stone outside here of Los Banos. And that stone is inscribed with the fifteen names of the men who died. The last part of this quest was to find pictures of everyone. And again, I will remind you, please do not toss anything away, because so many pictures were lost of these fifteen men, and you would think that it would be easy to find them. It was not. It took four years to find all the pictures. And with the help of people sitting in this audience, who came to me with the telegrams from the War Department, who came to me with pictures, who came to me with stories, and helped us gather all the information. During the process, out of the fourteen, out of the fifteen, there is one man, Louis McMullen, whose body is still at the bottom of the sea when his submarine went down, the USS Growler. His body was never recovered. And through the efforts of the National Cemetery, Rick Toscano, we were able to get a memorial stone for him. So now, he is recognized out at the National Cemetery in name and on a memorial stone. And now, he has a resting place. And as his son said, a son that his father never saw, he says, "I feel like my father's come home." Now, this memorial is now at a conclusion. And I will tell you that Randy Williamson found an article for me when we were looking for the pictures of the fifteen. And that article mentioned a memorial fund that was started in 1945. Now, we don't know where that money is, and Sonia, if you ever have time, you can track it sometime. So, we don't know what happened, but the memorial never came to fruition. It never happened. So now, seventy-one years later, we've completed the task that the city of Los Banos started. So please don't tell us the government moves slowly. It probably does, but that's a little too slow. So at this time, I would like to read once again the names of the fifteen. Lieutenant Lawrence Muth, Sergeant Edgar A. Duffield, Sergeant William Joseph Elias, Sergeant Joe Latronica, torpedo man's mate, second class, Louis Robert McMullen, Sergeant Bernard Ben Paradiso, Sergeant Tony Pennelli, Sergeant Tony Pisano, Sergeant Dominic Pricolow, Sergeant Frank Souza, Private Joseph A. Spina, M. Spina, Sergeant Frank Solano, Second Lieutenant John A. Norris, Sergeant Vernon Dale Sandvig, Sergeant William Butch Scanlon. VFW members?
Attention. Present arms. Order.
Thank you. This photo memorial will hang in City Hall as remembrance to those who died in service to our country, along with the memorial outside. And let us never forget, and just hope to God we never have to add another name. Thank you all for attending. I would just mention that, Rick, if you could pan the audience, how many here are survivors or friends of the fifteen men who died? Could you please just raise your hand who've come out tonight? Thank you so much for being in attendance. Okay, next, we have certificates of recognition to various organizations for helping feed local residents. And could I please have Lieutenant Felicia Grant come forward? Pastor Hammond? Pastor Garrison? And is Leah Williams here from Walmart? Good. Tonight, we are here to recognize a number of people who helped to feed the homeless, the less fortunate in our community. The certificates of recognition that are presented tonight will be for the recognition of your generous contribution and continued support to help feed the local residents in our community. And we can't thank you enough for what you do. Please don't stop. And it is a needed, a needed service in our community. And this is just a small recognition for what you've done, and we hope to recognize you more and more, because it's not only the right thing to do, but you take the time and effort to make sure that people who need a handout will receive it. So at this time, on behalf of the Los Banos City Council, I would like to present Felicia-- and is this your entourage here?
No.
Okay. Pastor Hammond?
Oh, they're with you.
Okay, it's your entourage. It's Pastor Hammond's entourage. Okay? Pastor Garrison?
Thank you.
And Leah, thank you so much for representing Walmart tonight. And is there anything that any of you'd like to say?
I just want to give a shout out. The reason Walmart's here is when they expanded and became a Super Walmart, they called up and wanted to know if they can give to our food pantry. We said, "Sure." And so, because of their generous donations, we pick up twice a week, we've been able to give just an amazing amount of food away. And we just wanted to say thank you for your partnership and your heart to bless the people who are in need of our city. We want to say thank you. And this is, these are some of our volunteers that work at Bethel Community Church. Just want to brag on them a little bit. It's often said by people around the county, "We have the best volunteers in the county." I agree with them. And they do a lot of work in this city, doing three giveaways per week.
Thank you. Pastor?
For the United Methodist Church, we host the Mana Ministries, which is really about eight different churches, take turns, it's always at our building, but they serve the meal. And Pastor Steve hooked us up with a group that donates the main course, and we get food from Walmart and Save Mart, and many community groups donate. The hospital donates to it, and so it's very much a community effort, and we're privileged to host it.
We have many volunteers as well that are committed to helping those that are less fortunate. We also are blessed to be able to deliver foods to residents that are homebound, and that has become one of our main objectives, to reach those that can't reach us. So we feel it's a privilege to be a part of our community and also to touch people's lives on a realistic and practical basis.
Representing Walmart, I just want to thank you guys for everything that you do. We do what we can, but you guys are the hands and the feet. You guys are the ones that are on the ground, and so it's an honor for us to be able to help you, because that's what we do, right? That's as humankind, as people, we should be helping those that can't, and we have the resources to do so, and we're honored to be able to help, too.
Thank you all, volunteers, for coming this evening, and keep doing what you're doing. Thank you. Members of the public may address the City Council members on any item of public interest that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council, which includes agenda and non-agenda items. No action will be taken on non-agenda items, and speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Detailed guidelines are posted on the council chamber informational table. When you approach the podium, please state your name and city of residence, and if you have a cellphone, please place them on vibrate or turn them off. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council and staff. I'm Rhonda Lowe, a resident of Los Banos, and I'm here tonight as the president of the Los Banos Downtown Association. And I just wanted to let you know a couple of things that we're doing to help our downtown become a vibrant, a more vibrant and vital part of our community, because we know a vibrant downtown helps the economy of our entire community. If you've been walking in the downtown area in the last few days, you've probably heard music playing. Our Downtown Association is, has some speakers up on the corner of Sixth and J and Sixth and I Street, and we're testing out two different speakers, but we're going to be having piped-in music for our downtown, people as they stroll the streets of downtown, and hopefully to make it a more walkable kind of downtown and enjoy it while they're there. On April 5th, we'll have our Grapes Hops and Shops, which is, it was a wine stroll, and now we've added beer tasting and sampling at each of our stores that are participating. And then, one thing we're really excited about, September 17th, we're going to have a farm-to-table dinner, and we're going to close off Sixth Street between J and I Street, put tables down the middle of the street, and the meal will be entirely prepared from things that are grown and produced in this area. And what we want to do is really to honor and feature and educate people about the importance of agriculture to our community. These dinners are done all over the place, and it just caught our attention, and we decided as a Downtown Association, we'd like to do this and kick it off. So that will be happening September 17th. And we appreciate the support from council when we do come before you and ask to close off streets and hope to make our downtown better than ever before. Thank you.
Thank you. And the date of the Grapes Hops--
August 5th.
August 5th.
It's the first Friday of August, and it'll be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m.
Great. And isn't there something this weekend?
Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, that's Chamber of Commerce? Oh, you're the Downtown Association?
I'm Downtown Association. We do have open mic night, which is something that we recently started as well. It's not an official Downtown Association thing, but we have been holding it in downtown businesses.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Silveira?
That was, I--
Oh, okay. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Okay, now we'll get the answer to what I asked. Okay.
Good evening, Bertha Freya, Los Banos Chamber of Commerce. The Los Banos Chamber is happy to welcome Terminex to membership with us. Terminex has been leading the fight against termites and pests since 1927. Their Merced office at 3817 North Highway 59 is happy to serve Los Banos residential and commercial pest control needs, and you can give them a call at 632-0783. We have a busy calendar for the upcoming weekend in Los Banos. This Friday evening, beginning at 6:30 p.m., Positive Changes will host an open mic night. You can enjoy live local entertainment with just a $5 cover charge. On Saturday, June 18th, the Relay for Life Los Banos will hold their third annual 5K color run at Persimmon Way Park, beginning at 8:00 a.m. Registration for adults is $25, 18 and under is $20. There will be color powder for sale, and a barbecue lunch will follow the run. If you are interested in researching your family history, consider joining the Los Banos Genealogical Society. They will be meeting this Saturday at 16788 Place Road, and they meet every third Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to noon. Of course, your Los Banos Chamber is very excited about our Dad's Night Out. We hope you will join us downtown Saturday evening as we celebrate Dad with vendors, food, live music, cold beer, and a car show. We've moved our annual event from a Pacheco Park afternoon to a downtown evening in hopes of a not only cooler event, but a more Dad-style casual evening. Bring Dad out for four from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. in downtown on Sixth Street, and by the way, Happy Father's Day to all our Dads. Our June Mixer will be a first, hosted by Wells Fargo Bank on June 23rd. Kim and her staff have been busy preparing a great event. And last, but certainly not least, please visit your chamber at 1337 Pacheco Boulevard in the Save Mart Shopping Center, beginning Tuesday, June 28th, and purchase your TNT Safe &amp; Sane fireworks. We will be open for business at noon on Tuesday and be open through 8:00 p.m. on the 4th of July. We look forward to a great fundraiser to help us provide more community events and promote the quality of life that is Los Banos. Thank you.
Do you take council requests for music downtown?
Um, I'll have to--
Okay, I will. Okay.
Father Noah Lawson--
St. Albans--
--looking church. On June 25th, Saturday, the church will be celebrating the feast of St. Albans, our patron saint, and starting at 11:30, there'll be a festal eucharist, followed by a community barbecue from about 1:00 until 5:30, games and bounce houses and all the kind of typical activities, followed by even song at 5:30 with an ice cream social afterwards and family movie. Anyone and everyone is welcome to attend.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum?
Hi there, my name is Joanne Lamas. I'm the new Westside Field Representative for Senator Anthony Canelo. I just wanted to come by and introduce myself, and also let everyone know that we do host mobile district office hours in this room on the third Thursday of every month, from 11:30 to 12:30. So if anyone has any state issues and can't make it all the way out to our series office, I'm more than happy to help you out here. I have business cards with me, if you would like one. I'll be here a few minutes after the meeting to talk to anyone if they have anything.
Okay. Would you leave some business cards with our, I just lost it, Director of Human Resources, please?
Sure.
Okay?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the public forum? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public forum, and we will go on to item seven, consideration of approval of consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine, and we voted on in one motion unless removed from the consent agenda by a City Council member. And tonight, we have, Director Maloney?
Items on the consent agenda are as follows. Warrant numbers 159658 through 159895, in the amount of $896,822.61. Minutes for the adjourned City Council meeting of May 31st, 2016. Minutes for the adjourned City Council meeting of June 6th, 2016. City Council Resolution Number 5756, approving a tentative agreement memorandum of understanding by and between the City of Los Banos and the Los Banos Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association for July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2018. City Council Resolution Number 5757, amending Division IV salary schedule, employee classifications relating to changes to Section G police to reflect changes associated with the approval of the tentative agreement with the Los Banos Police Dispatchers Community Services Officers Association, and the items are to be approved as submitted.
Okay, is there any City Council member who would like to remove an item for discussion? If not, do I have a motion? Mr. Silveira?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Okay, do I have a second? Stonegrove?
Second.
Okay, motion by Silveira, second by Stonegrove, to approve the consent agenda as stated. All in favor? Aye. Any opposition? None carried. Item eight, public hearing. If you challenge your proposed action as described herein in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing described herein or written correspondence delivered to the city prior to the public hearing. Item 8A, public hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of the appropriation limitation for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. And the item 8A1, City Council Resolution Number 5758, setting the tax-related appropriation limit in compliance with Proposition 4 and Proposition 1-- limit in compliance with Proposition 4 and Proposition 111 for the 2016-2017 fiscal year. And we will go to Finance Director Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Each year, the City Council establishes by resolution its appropriations limitation pursuant to Article 13B of the California Constitution. Proposition 4 and Proposition 11 create a restriction on the amount of government revenue which may be appropriated in each fiscal year. This year, the appropriation limit is $78,178,248. The proceeds subject to limitation are $13,480, $480,000, or 17%, and therefore will not impact, will not be impacted by the appropriations limit. Tonight, I'm asking that Council conduct a public hearing and then adopt a resolution approving the amended appropriations limit for 2016-2017 fiscal year, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, let me open the public hearing, if that's okay. We'll see if there are any questions from the public, and if not, I'll bring it back to Council level if you have any questions. Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing when City Council Resolution Number 5758 is read by title. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on Resolution 5758? Not seeing or hearing anyone, I will now close the public hearing on City Council Resolution Number 5758. Are there, are there any questions from Council? Do I have a motion then? Ms. Faria?
I'll move to adopt City Council Resolution Number 5758 as read by title.
Mr. Silveira?
Second.
Motion by Faria, second by Silveira, to approve City Council Resolution Number 5758. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Item 8B, Public Hearing, to receive public comment and consideration of the 2016-2017 fiscal year budget. Item 8B1, City Council Resolution Number 5759, adopting the 2016-2017 year budget, including employee salary schedule, Division 4 of the Los Banos Policy and Procedures Manual. And we will go to Finance Director Williams.
We seem to have lost my presentation, just one minute.
Okay.
Okay. So tonight, I'm just gonna go over the general fund budget with you and the other funds as well in a summary form, not in as much detail as we did the other night when we had the workshop. So, we'll be touching on the changes that we made to the general fund budget from the last workshop. The council goals, which were moving Measure K employees back and funding unfunded positions. We'll talk a little bit about the one-time expenses, the special revenue funds, enterprise funds, internal service funds, and also any changes that we made to the salary schedule. And as always, feel free to interrupt me, please. I have a lot of information to go over tonight. So, if you could see on Rick's fancy new TVs, my slides are a little bit bigger. As you could see, the sales tax, as we talked about a little bit last time, the sales tax, we do show a decrease of $84,000 to sales tax and $111,000 to property tax in lieu of sales tax. And again, this has to do with expiration of the triple flip. We are hoping to get the one-time payment in August, and that'll be accrued back into the current fiscal year, and then we should be pretty consistent and growing, hopefully, from here on out. The property taxes, we have estimated that we expect to get a 3% increase, and we are being conservative, but as I explained last time, a lot of this has to do with what we, the information that we have been given is conservative throughout the state. But I know that we've seen a lot of houses come in, but the way that it hits the tax roll takes a little bit longer than you would expect it to, so we don't necessarily expect to see a huge increase from the houses that are being built currently. Overall, the property taxes and sales tax make up for approximately 72% of your general fund budget. Other revenues include licenses and permits, charges for services, and other revenue. We do have a decrease, as we touched on a little bit before, in these different accounts, and a lot of that has to do with conservative budgeting. Again, we talk a lot about the firefighter reimbursements, and we don't expect them to have to go out on strike team, and so we're very conservative when we budget there. We budget at $10,000. That is a decrease from $96,000 that we saw in the current fiscal year. We have a decrease in grants, and also we have a decrease in admin sites. A lot of the admin sites that we see coming in is also not something we expect to do, so we are conservative when we budget for that. And then, sales of fixed assets, we did sell off some property, some old cars, in the amount of about $17,000 that we're not expecting to gain again this coming fiscal year. And other than that, our revenues aren't too far off. We are estimating to finish the year with 13.7 in revenues. So, changes that we made to the general fund budget since the last time we met here are we decreased the admin budget by $43,000, and we talked a little bit about that during the budget workshop, what that was, was we were adding a full-time position to the HR department. We put the full cost in the general fund when it should have been split out amongst the other funds as well. So you will see a decrease in $43,000 there. Another thing we talked about is moving $15,000 of the contingency from admin to the community development department. So that doesn't change the fund balance, it just changes from one department to the other. And then, two new items are we, because of the discussion that we had during the budget workshop, the city manager went back and we took a look at the volunteers' pay, and we decided to increase the fire volunteers' contributions by $5,000 for the year, and then also increase the police volunteer contributions to $1,500, which they should be grateful for, because right now, unfortunately, PD doesn't really have any, so this will be starting a fund for PD as well. And in addition, we'll be going over some minor adjustments to the, minor adjustments that we made to the salaries. We'll go over that in more detail when we get to the schedule in the back. So just to touch a little bit on the general fund expenditures, the items that were increased citywide and are not considered one-time expenditures are COLA increases, and those may range anywhere from 2.5% to 5% depending on the bargaining group. And employees' benefits increased overall for both person health insurance by 10%. Liability insurance, we estimated a 10% increase. Electricity and gas, we estimated approximately 7% increase. And then, some of the other funds, like I discussed, we did move the Measure K employees back into the general fund, so you'll see an increase in PD, and you'll see the increase in fire. And now, I'm just calling it Measure P. We got rid of the A, we got rid of the K, and we're just down to P. So we could all go back to calling it Measure P, there's no other employees in there. So those are, those are increases outside of the 1%, or the one-time increases. And then, admin also received a full-time employee. But as you can see, the percentages stay pretty consistent throughout the year. Police is usually right there around 60-61%, and fire goes from 10% to 11%, and the same with admin, and everybody else stays pretty much constant. But the police budget is a little over $9 million for the year. The fire budget is 1.5, admin budget is 1.4, the maintenance budget is $680,000, the building is $680,000, community development is $511,000, or 3%, recreation is $371,000, code enforcement is $300,000, the community center is $85,000, and engineering is $97,000. So, in addition to the citywide expenditures that I was just talking about, these are the one-time expenses that we've really been focusing on this year. And as we discussed again at the workshop, we took what we anticipated to be a surplus in this current fiscal year and applied it to things that needed to be done in the upcoming fiscal year. So there were a lot of things that needed replacing that we decided to take care of with the one-time money, and those do include the phone system, so that'll be the citywide phone system, we'll be upgrading the whole system. The network and server replacements, those are for City Hall and police, the police department. The police also will be replacing five of their vehicles currently in use. The fire will replace one command vehicle. They will also be purchasing turnouts and the cost of $15,000. Code enforcement will be replacing one vehicle, and again, we only have to pay 32% of that vehicle, the AVA fund will be taking care of the rest of that, so that's a plus. Recreation has a couple capital improvement projects, and those are at Ranchwood Facility and College Green Facility, and they'll be redoing the flooring, carpeting at one and linoleum, I believe, at the other. And then finally, we did add $100,000 as a placeholder for the PAL filled restrooms. So overall, one-time expenditures for the upcoming budget year are $148,662. So balancing the budget, we will be utilizing the reserves to balance this year's budget, and that mainly has to do with one-time expenditures. The expected surplus for the current fiscal year is $1.4 million, and as you can see the bottom there, our deficit is $1.1 million. So we're expecting just to put a little over $300,000 between the two years of surplus back into the fund balance. And at the end of the coming fiscal year, 16-17 fiscal year, our estimating fund balance will be $8,616,92. And as always, staff will continue to review the budget sources and will bring any necessary changes to the council, including the mid-year budget adjustments. So that's really all I have tonight for the general fund. I'd like to move on to the other funds, if anybody has any questions regarding the general fund? Okay. So moving on to Measure P, the beginning fund balance for fire is $539,000. They will be deficit spending a little bit this year, but that is because they are adding the fueling facility and infrastructure for both the fueling facility and the training tower, at a cost of $175,000. But again, we have moved the final employee out of Measure K and back into the general fund. Same goes with police. Their fund balance is a little healthy. What happened here is, according to the ordinance, they were supposed to get an additional employee. So that employee, again, it won't hit Measure K, it'll go into Measure P, and it'll be something that's paid out of Measure P ongoing, not something that eventually has to be moved back. So their fund balance is looking relatively strong, and hopefully, we could start taking a look at how we would bond out for the possibility of a new police station. And so, it's, the timing is good, it looks great that we have that money available, we're not deficit spending, and we'll be able to make a bond payment, hopefully, out of this account.
Yes, sir. And how long does Measure P go on?
There's no end to Measure P, there's no sense in it.
It goes on indefinitely.
Yes.
Very good. So we can, we can bond forever.
So we can, we can bond forever. That won't be the case, hopefully.
We got a nice police station out of there.
That's a great thought. Sonia?
Yes.
The, what kind of available money would we have as a bond payment if we were to bond for the police station? What kind of payment could we make a year?
Out of here, out of this? Honestly, we, it's not something that we've even calculated yet. It would all depend on how much the police station costs. If we estimated about 20, 30 million dollars, I would estimate a couple hundred thousand, maybe 3, 400,000 dollars that we'd have to pay out, and as you could see, we'd be okay doing that, because with the expenditures right now, at 685, we're putting money away in the fund balance, and it would be something we could just flatten out. Not try to, you know, eat up the entire fund balance, but make it where it's just even. That really is the, the point of the fund.
And then, the fire stations, additional fire stations that we need?
So the, I haven't, we haven't even begun talks on additional fire stations as far as this funding goes. I know the priority here is to get the tower built, and hopefully, if we could build up this account, the tower's not something that we would have to bond out for. It's not, the cost is not that much. My understanding is it's a little less than a million dollars, correct?
Yeah. Let me, let me turn on the mic. Once we complete the infrastructure this year, then we're looking at an additional expense of around $600,000 to complete that project. And that will be, when that project's complete, all of our obligations of Measure P have been met.
And then, at that point, we could start looking at other options, but as far as the 600 goes, the fund balance is 531, and so, you know, we would build up the fund balance and just pay it out of that, that account, and not bond out for it. It's not, it's not enough. If we had to do internal financing, it would be a better option than bonding out.
Okay. Because I remember we'd spoken at times, and all of us had talked about the response times, and how the east end of town, on the south side, at some point, either through developer or whatever, we'd want a fire station over there. So, okay, thank you. Go ahead, Sonia, sorry.
Moving on to the enterprise funds, I have water revenues at 5.9, expenditures at 5.1, with a net activity of 800,000. Some of the changes to the budget include purchasing water meters, we've talked about that a little bit for the new homes that will be developed, treatment and testing of wells, the master plan, and then also a vehicle purchase. Waste water, 6.4 million in revenues, 7.8 million in expenditures, with a net activity deficit of 1.4 million. Again, we'll be working on the master plan projects, there are several projects that go along with this, and that's why we are deficit spending. And then, we do have some specialized equipment that we talked about before, that we'll be purchasing to, to work on the projects. And then finally, solid waste, the revenues are 7 million, expenditures 9 million, and we'll be deficit spending at 2 million. We did add part-time positions to this fund. We will be working on the landfill closure project, which again, is part of the reason for the deficit spending, and then also, we will be purchasing specialized equipment in this fund as well. Landscape and lighting, last council meeting, you guys did approve to increase some of the, excuse me, to increase some of the districts, and so that'll be a big help, but there are 18 districts, five of which are operating with a negative balance. The signs of improvements to the, to those deficits, again, are you improving the increases? And then, the development, some of these houses being built will add to those districts and help fix that fund balance. There are different district projects that are going on in Ranchwood, there's a storm pump station at $6,500 being added, and a picnic arbor. Los Banos Creek District has a storm pump going in as well for $10,000, and the rail corridor has a landscape improvement project for drought-tolerant landscaping going in as well. We also added part-time, six part-time positions to the districts, and this should help increase the services throughout the 18 districts. And then finally, as we always speak about, we do need to really look into restructuring District 19, which is Talbot Park, and try to figure out how we're going to pay for that and get them out of the deficit, because they're the only ones that we don't really see coming out in the long term. So hopefully, that's something we can figure out, whether it's moving the park out or some other solution. And then finally, the internal services funds, there are three of them, fleet maintenance, IT, and retirees' medical health. The fleet maintenance annual budget is 900,000. We did authorize a part-time position to help out in fleet maintenance. IT department's budget for the year is $481,000. We will be replacing 25 computers throughout the city, and then also updating the City Hall generator, as we talked about, to make it a little bit more user-friendly and get the front stations that the girls work on up and running, and connect it to that in case we lose power. That way, we can continue to help customers. And then finally, retirees' medical health, 1.2 million annually is the budget, and this funds retired employees' benefits. And then last but not least, the salary schedule adjustments. So we didn't go over these at all during the workshops, so we did add a full-time admin clerk position to the admin department, so you'll see an additional position there. We changed the senior planners from a range, it was the only mid-management position that was in a range and not steps, so we wanted to make it consistent with all the other mid-manager positions, and we changed it from the range to steps. So now you'll see that they're step 1 through 6, like all other employees. We added three full-time admin clerk positions to the police department. We added a full-time police officer position, which was basically unfunding the funded position that we had already, but instead of being paid out of the general fund, it would be paid out of Measure P. We have 2.5% COLA increases to all unrepresented employees, so that is a positive thing. Also, we increased bargaining units per their approval. So each bargaining group negotiated their ranges a little bit differently, and some of those were last year, some of those were this year. In accordance with that, there is, the commanders for the police department kind of fall in with the police, even though technically they're unrepresented, but in order to avoid compaction, we had to give them the same increase that the other police positions would be getting. So you'll see that adjustment as well. So you'll see that adjustment as well on the salary schedule. And then we did increase for all unrepresented employees, step six is currently a 2.5% increase to step from, step five to step six is 2.5%. We've now made it 5% for all unrepresented groups and that includes department heads as well. And increasing the department heads' range, it changed, it changed their spread from 27.5% to 31%, so we wanted to make it consistent, so we dropped the starting range and we shrunk it back down to the 27.5%. So you'll notice that change on your salary schedule as well. And then finally, we did increase part-time positions to 1050 an hour as mandated by the governor and that will be effective January 1st of 2017. So you'll see, that one's a little odd-looking and they're still showing they're not quite crossed out yet because the rate is good until the end of the year and then it'll change effective January 17. And those are, I believe I covered all of the adjustments to the salary schedules. Does anybody have any questions regarding those adjustments?
Can someone talk to me a little bit about the city hall generator? Will it be able to be used, the city hall be able to have enough power to be used as a command center? And you mentioned powering the computers and so how much will this generator handle?
So the generator just currently, right now, handles the server room. It keeps the air conditioning going in the closet and the servers running in the closet. What it's going to do is it's just going to allow us to help the people that are in the building temporarily. It's not something that's planned to be up and running. Where there's larger generators is the fire department and they would be the command center. That's something that has a large generator that can be up and running and help everything out. And then once the police station is built, I know they have something now, they'll continue to have something, the police department as well, that would also be a command center or not, depending on how they decided to do it, but city hall would not be one. City hall would just be about the safety of getting the employees and any customers that might be in city hall out of the building if it was going to be long-term or just helping them while we were down. So they could still kind of look at their accounts, take the payments for the people that were in here, but most likely if it went down, we would probably shut the building down until the power came back on.
Okay.
If it was long-term. If it was just a half an hour, 45 minutes, then we would run off the generator.
All right. So let me get this straight then. So as far as city hall is concerned, we can be up and running, doing business as usual?
Mm-hmm.
And if someone comes in, we, the generator will cause like an uninterrupted power stream for us to power all our computers here?
Not all of the computers, just the computers at the front counter.
Uh-huh.
So they could keep on working at the front counter, but it doesn't have enough capacity to run all of city hall. It's just to temporarily help the people that are up front. We could do hand receipts, but we wouldn't be able to look up any of their information. So we decided just to power the three computers that are up at the front station.
Okay.
And I'm sure there's room for maybe one or two others in the back and it would probably be the city manager, maybe the HR, you know, the department head, something like that, but we wouldn't be able, we don't have the capacity to run all the computers.
But if you needed, you can access records through any computer?
Yes, we can.
All right. So I guess that's my question. You'll be able to function and information will be able to be disseminated to customers that come in and it'll be just like business as usual?
Yes.
Less computers?
That's correct.
Okay.
It'll just be a little slower, take us a little longer.
Okay. And as far, well, that's okay. And as far as the fire department and the city hall or the police department, then they have the generator capacity to keep going if the power goes out? Kim, can you?
Yes, we do. Station was originally designed with a generator intact, but much like city hall, it does not power our entire building. It powers the critical infrastructure at the station, the doors, the lights, the emergency operations center that's established in our main dining room. So we are confident that if we do lose power, grid power, that we can support that emergency operations center there for quite some time. Also, our tower, our communication tower is on a separate generator just for redundancy.
So both emergency services, police and fire, feel that they are adequately protected?
Yeah, but I really look forward to the police department developing a more user-friendly emergency operations center when it is built. The station is capable of handling what we need right now.
Uh-huh.
But there's a lot more that could be added that will make it better in the event of a disaster and I'm really looking forward to that building getting built to handle that.
Will the software help in any way that we're purchasing for calls and?
No, I think that the software is built more around everyday responses and then be able to research records of the people that they're making contact with.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So the other items that we touched on at the workshop, work community center fees and increasing the fees, there is nothing included in the budget and as Mark mentioned last time, they are pretty much booked out for the year, so we'll be bringing this back at a later date with a request to increase them. If it does change the budget, then of course that would be adjusted when necessary, but we will bring a couple of different options to the council as we discussed at the workshop. And then the strike team reimbursement, just a reminder, we did talk, discuss a little bit about putting the admin or the vehicle portion aside for the funds, I'm sorry, for the funds received at the strike team. So if they were to take one of the city vehicles, they get a 10% admin fee and we would set that aside. I will work on a memo that outlines the policy for the city manager, just so we have it in writing, but we will assign those funds that were received at the end of each fiscal year. So the, most likely like today, the second meeting in June, we would collect everything that had come in, look, take a look at it and then do a memo and the city manager at that time would assign any of the funds. And so the recommendations for tonight are to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving the 2016, 17 fiscal year budget as submitted. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Okay. Why don't I open the public hearing and see if there's anyone who'd like to comment on city council resolution number 5759. So at this time, the public hearing is open on that agenda item, item 8B1. Is there anyone who wishes to speak? Not seeing your hearing anyone, I will now bring it back to council level. And city council members? Ms. Stonegrove?
I'll be the first to thank Sonia and her staff, Martha, Kim, Rosemary, the entire finance staff for their hard work on this budget. In addition, the department heads, I know that it's no small feat and it's, is the best budget that I have been a part of in terms of the economy and the revenue that we're being able to bring in right now. And there's two things specifically that I'm really happy about in this budget and the first thing is that we're able to bring all of those employees out of Measure P. I know that's been a council goal since we went out for Measure K and Measure A. So really excited about that and being able to build up the money for the facilities in the Measure P account now. And I'm also really excited to be able to give back some more money to our employees. We talk a lot about how talented our staff is and how hardworking they are and how they make us look good and we brag about our staff all the time and everything is well-deserved, everything that we say, but I know that our words are only so much. And so I'm, I'm very proud that we're able to, to do a little bit more for the employees too. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Is that a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion. I will move to adopt city council resolution number 5759, adopting the 2016, 2017 fiscal year budget, including employee salary schedule, Division 4 of the Los Vanos Policy and Procedures Manual.
Her second. Mrs. Lewis?
Before I give my second, I'd like to echo the comments of Councilmember Stonegrove and especially in light of the fact that we're able to continue to give back to our employees for all the sacrifices they did for the city and I'd look forward to the future where we can give you more. And with that, I would like to give a second.
Ditto all those comments, they're all well-deserved. Thank you. We have a motion by Stonegrove, second by Lewis, to approve city council resolution number 5759 as read by title. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? None carried. Okay, let's go on to item nine, advisement. Yes, sir.
Can I just make a comment really quick?
Yes.
I too want to echo the comments of my colleagues up here on the job that is done by staff, by department heads to come up with a budget that lets us take advantage of some one-time monies and get some projects completed that have probably been on the list for a while and I'm, and I'm happy to see in there that we did get an increase to the volunteer fire department, not what I originally asked for, but a number that I think that we can work with. And I'm also happy to see that through the forward-thinking of our city manager and the finance director and this finance staff, that they started to put a little bit of money in for our volunteers in PD. We don't want to let them go unrecognized as well. So I do want to say thank you guys and, you know, for, for what we have going on and we're doing the best that we can to manage our money and then to have nobody come up at our public hearings, I take that as, as okay, we must be doing a good job because most of the people in the room are the regulars that are here and I'm glad that you guys are here, but there's nobody screaming and yelling at us that we're doing something wrong. So again, thank you.
Thank you. I didn't want to be self-serving, but I'm glad they put the money in for the PD, being a new member of the volunteer police vital. So, I didn't want to say I can't vote on it because it'd be self-serving, but now I can say something. So absolutely excellent and you heard the comments up here, staff. And Mrs. Stonegrove's comment resonates with all of us, that, that words are one thing, but money talks. So we're hoping that we can continue this path and, and thank you. Yes, sir.
I'd like to put in my two cents for the $40 million here. It's a lot and when you stop to think about it, between 35, 40 million dollar budget, we talk about general fund, 14 million dollars in general fund, we haven't seen a general fund that big in a long, long time. And the reason things are working well is because of our management team and because the budget, everything comes through budget. Every time any department wants anything, it's all, you always have to come to the budget. That's the same, in any business, any school, same thing, you gotta go to the budget people and the budget people have to make those balances and that all balanced and everybody works together for that. And ours, our employees made a lot of sacrifices, took pretty good hits, salary and benefits. We're able now finally to give some of that back. I'm very pleased to be able to do that. I'm pleased, I believe that not only paying our employees well is not only a sign of appreciation, it also, in our society, your income is prestige in American culture. And if you want the best people, you need to pay them. And I think that we have the best people and we continue to work to pay them, all we can afford to pay them within our budgetary limits because they do great work and those better salaries draw in better people and makes it more competitive for those jobs. And that's the American way and I truly believe that it is, we're doing it and doing it well. So thank you very, very much for the hard work and pleased to see it all happen so smoothly.
Okay. Let's go on to item nine, advisement of public notices and we have three reports tonight. Senior Planner Elms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. So the first item is a conditional use permit for Bynum's Los Vanos Mortuary. They're proposing to be located at 285 Mercy Springs Road and this, this will be in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. Just to give you some information, this location would not have services. It would just be a professional office where arrangements can be made and where there'll be a medical office where human remains will, will be worked on. There's no really other way to explain it, but so that you can understand that there, it will not have an assembly area, there will be no services here. This would be purely a medical and professional office, which is allowed in the Highway Commercial Zoning District. However, in this specific district, mortuaries are not a use that's outright specified, so we are requesting that they go through the conditional use permit process and get permission from the planning commission to do so. The next item is a site plan review. This is for O'Reilly's Auto Parts and this will be a continued item. They're still at the design review stage with the planning commission. The first rendition of their elevations were not quite to par to what the planning commission wanted to see located at the corner of Sixth Street and Pacheco Boulevard. It's the northwest corner of Sixth Street and Pacheco Boulevard. So the planning commission gave the applicant some suggestions, some recommendations, asked them to do their homework and to bring back a better plan. So the planning commission has a high standard of what they want to see built in our community and this is a reflection, this project is a reflection of that. And then the next item is a conditional use permit for a type 41 alcohol license and this is for Taqueria 152. It's a new restaurant located at 1041 West Pacheco Boulevard and they are requesting just beer and wine in conjunction with an eating place. And those public hearings will be held on Wednesday, June 22nd at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers.
Stacy, if you go back to the mortuary again, is it going to be essentially like for coroner's operations there or embalming operations? No services there, just going to take care of, is it going to be a crematorium there too?
No. They will send bodies out for, for that, but there, there will be preparation that will be done within the medical office part of it and then you can go make arrangements. You can pick whether it's going to be a casket, you can pick caskets, you can make your arrangements there, but you will not be able to have services.
So then their services would be in their, in their, in their other locations?
That if they're going to be located here in town, this is actually a company out, their headquarters is in Tulare, so they're an existing business, but I'm assuming, and this is just me purely assuming, that then you would make arrangements with faith-based buildings or churches, things like that?
Oh, I see.
To hold those services.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Senior Planner Elms on item nine? Okay? Information only, let's go to city manager's report. City Manager Breezy.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I will just repeat some of the comments that you've made about the finance staff tonight. They worked very hard on the budget. I asked them to do a lot of different things, a lot of different times and they were very accommodating to me, so thank you all. I see Martha back there, Sonia, Rosemary and Kim, thank you guys very much. It's my last meeting up here. The other part of this is that I've had a blast working with all of the department heads that I've had the opportunity to work with for the past six months. We've actually gotten a lot accomplished in the past six months if you think about it, so I appreciate all their work, I appreciate all their patience and I just want to say thank you to each of the department heads tonight and to you. So thank you guys very much for the opportunity. That's all.
Well, thank you and we'll be talking more about that in the weeks to come. Thank you, Gary, for what you've done. All right. Let's go on to city council member reports and tonight we'll start with Mr. Sardar.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of quick things. The first thing is I want to say thank you to the city manager, the finance director, our city attorney. We do have a new revenue sharing agreement in place with the county. We voted at it, on it at a special meeting at the beginning of the month, I don't remember the exact day, and then the following day, the county took action on it. And so I'm excited that that has been something that, at least since I've been on council from the end of 2010, beginning 2011 till now, has been a topic of discussion. And so through the hard work of staff on both sides, from the county and from the city of Los Vanos, we were able to get what I think is a fair and equitable revenue sharing agreement. So I'm excited, I'm excited about that. It shows that when we put our differences aside and try to work for a common goal, that we all can work together and come up with creative and positive solutions. So I'm, I'm really excited that that is now behind us. I want to thank Gary for the hard work that he continued to do. We didn't, we saw very little to no change in the direction the city was heading in from when our previous city manager left till when he took over. And with that, I want to, again, our new city manager will be here at the July council meeting, will be his first meeting is July, July the 6th. And I want to welcome him aboard and want to kind of let him know that he should be thankful of the staff that we have and- that he should be thankful of the staff that we have and the work that we've done, because I feel like he's, he's walking into a pretty good situation that he will get to spend a lot of time trying to make even better. So with that, I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. Let's go on to Mrs. Stonegrove.
Thank you. I also want to thank City Manager Breezy for your service for the past several months. I know we talked about it before, but really, really was a seamless transition, better than seamless transition, and we all appreciate the work that you've done for the city, and glad we don't have to say goodbye, goodbye to you, but thank you for everything that you've done. And also want to thank the police department and Public Works Department for their efforts on Graffiti Cleanup Day. We held an event last Friday, we had a little over 50 volunteers come out from Pacheco High School and Los Vanis High School, and special thank you to Patricia from the police department who coordinated all of the logistics for the event. It went very well, and also I want to recognize Pacheco Softball and Pacheco Cheer, they both brought membership from their team out. Pacheco Cheer comes out almost every time we have a graffiti cleanup event now, so I want to really recognize them, and both of their coaches, Charlie Picas and Lori Moore, were out for the entirety of the event. So thank you to everyone who worked on that effort and volunteered. Thank you.
Let's go on to Mrs. Lewis, oh, Ms. Freya, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary? Fantastic work. The sealing of that revenue sharing deal was a tremendous accomplishment. Much, much owed to your work on that, finishing it up. It was in the process for many years, but it was your dedication and your focus with the staff here. Mr. Vaughn and Ms. Williams pushed for that, that made that happen, and we're glad that the county approved it, but it finally happened, a long time coming, and owes much, we owe much to you, holding the city together very, very well and smoothly. It was masterfully done, and we appreciate it very much. Another masterful accomplishment in Los Vanis is we are now the home to a world record holder, the youngest swimmer to swim aquatrazza in back, nine-years-old James Savage, and he's a neighbor of mine, I've watched him grow up, he's a cute little fellow, and you look at him, you wonder how in the world does he get the energy and the power to pull against that tide? He weighs 57 pounds, so he's a tremendous young little man, and it's quite a big deal, quite a big deal. He was on all the news stories, and I've been watching him, listening to him train, talk about it, he doesn't talk a lot, but boy, he can sure swim. So that's very exciting, congratulations, James. The memorial pictures here at City Hall, come on down, they're gonna be here forever, so you can take a look at those who gave their lives for our country. This is Flag Day week, honoring the flag, and that flag is such a huge symbol for all of us. We want to thank the groups who are here tonight, people feeding the hungry in town. Whatsoever you do, with the least of my people you do unto me, when I was hungry, you fed me, and that is a very, very wonderful thing. Los Vanis is a family-type of town, and we take care of our people, and our people take care of our people, and that's exciting. Father's Day, and then this Saturday.
At the evening Chamber of Commerce, I will be playing, whenever I get the jazz group together, I call it Tom and the Tomcats, we'll have, play some oldies and some jazz and some rock and roll and some things. Don Carter's gonna be playing with us, Ron Bertello, Debbie Lozato's gonna come down and play with us too, so it should be a lot of fun. The event starts at 4:00 downtown this time, in the evening, and music's gonna start at 6:30, and you're gonna have some food and some beer, and the restaurant, one of the restaurants is doing a special menu, some cool snacks, the ice cream, Surf Sub's gonna have his, gonna have his ice cream there in a cart, so you'll be able to have a good time. The weather looks beautiful in the eighties, and I'm looking forward to a wonderful evening there. And I think I've covered everything I wanted to cover today, and once again, thanks for all the hard work on the budget, no mean feat.
Thank you.
Have a wonderful Father's Day.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Gary, thank you for holding our city together during this transition. I have to say, you stepped into a fire in some things, but you put it out very well, and I appreciate the job that you did and your professionalism as our city manager, and also the opportunity that you afforded your two commanders to step into your place to be acting chief of police, it gave them good experience for their future as well. So thank you for all that you did for our city, and I really appreciate it. In regards to the pastors and Salvation Army who came before us today, I just want to give a great thanks to the efforts that they do in our community, but also to be mindful of the people who donate financially to these organizations as well, to help them keep going. It takes a lot of money to reach out and help people in the community, not only just with food, but with clothing, with helping them find shelter, and in some cases with some job training and counseling. So my hats are off to these people and to everyone in the community who financially donates to these organizations to help them stay in operation. I want to wish everyone a happy Father's Day, who are fathers, and enjoy your time with your families. And also, I'd like to make one request to our city manager, and that would be to bring back our special events ordinance code for reconsideration of fees charged to our organizations to the public. I'd love, I think we need to review that based on what we passed when it came before us last year.
I can answer that question. Staff is already in the works of?
I understand, I just want to make a formal request, what's on the record, that we need to, we need to bring that back and review it and reconsider the fees that are being charged.
Yes, and just to fill in a little bit, that was the plan, to bring it back, I'm glad you brought it up. Staff is working on a plan to revamp that ordinance, and they will have a plan for us.
Okay. And lastly, but not least, for all you Warriors fans out there, let's hope they bring home the trophy tomorrow night. Go Warriors. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Well, our city manager has been given a lot of accolades tonight, and I have to tell you that all I remember in administration is your staff can either make you or break you, and in this case, the staff made his job very easy. And I think that's a true sign of management. When one person departs, things can either go very, very well or terribly wrong, and in this case, all of staff came together to make it go very, very right. And, you know, I haven't spent this much time with Gary since sixth grade, and so I have to tell you that I'm very impressed, and I'm also impressed of how staff came together to make sure that it was one cohesive unit in running the city. More people received some opportunities, work was heaped on people to make sure, staff members to make sure that things did not go awry, they went correctly, and they did. And it was, who said seamless transition, very seamless transition, whoever council member said that was right on point, because it was a seamless transition. And when Alex comes, it's gonna be another seamless transition, because of staff, because of all staff, and I think we have to remember that. Revenue sharing, and this is, this is a fantastic comment, that Los Vanis is the only one to get a revenue sharing agreement right now. We've been working on this for a long time, and it's been the goal of all the council members to make sure that this came to pass. It has, we approved it, we got a good deal, and the county approved it. And so now, I'll just leave it at that, because I don't want to put anybody on the spot, because we're very happy with what we received. And so it was through the hard work of Bill and Sonia and Gary that this agreement came to pass, and it's a good agreement. It's gonna mean a lot of money for the city in its future build-out, so money we wouldn't have had before. So, open-mic night, if you can attend, it's at Positive Changes. It's a nice get-together for the town. The town, the Downtown Association, the Chamber of Commerce, they're all planning different activities. Attend these activities, because, you know, it brings Los Vanis citizens together and have a good time. City wants to be part of that. So we're happy that these things are going on, and the movers and shakers are the individuals in our town that want good things for our community. Of course, the council wants good things for our community, but we need the help of the citizens who have businesses in town that wanted, that want events, the farm to table. I remember, I remember people contacting me about that on Facebook, and it was, it's a great thing, big, long table downtown, everyone gets to eat with stuff that's produced in our valley. So another great event, and it brings people downtown that normally you wouldn't meet. So attend these functions. Dad's Night Out is new, that's something else, 4:00 to 10:00 PM, and you can hear Ms. Freya sing. And again, the Feast of St. Albans, go visit their church. You don't have to join, they have great food, but go visit them, they'd love to have you. A lot of functions in Los Vanis, a lot of people that come together to make nice things happen in Los Vanis, support those nice things. So with that, I would like to close, and close this meeting in memory of the 15 men who died in service to our country. And with that, I'd like to adjourn this meeting.